All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Some people are still filtering in here. But we're going to go ahead and get started with our town hall session. Number two this afternoon. We've got a number of topics that we're going to go through this afternoon. And kicking us off this afternoon is going to be Katie Holmgren. Katie is the Director of Program Services at USA Hockey. And Katie is going to be talking to us about back to the rig growth strategies. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Katie. And Katie, I'll try and monitor the chat and the questions a little bit for you.
Sounds good.
If anybody has any questions or comments that they want, you can either use the chat or the Q and A box. Either one, either one works and we can see either one. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Katie.
Thanks, George. Hi, everybody. I'm Katie Holmgren. As George mentioned, I'm the Director of Program Services at USA Hockey. So for any of you I haven't met, just give you a quick background. I was in our adult department, manager of adult. I worked in the adult department for eight years before Kevin asked me to come over to the program services side. And a little more background on program services, since I know not everyone is familiar with that department title. We were formerly known as Membership Development. So we oversee our Try Hockey for Free events, Girls Hockey Weekend, the Hat Trick Growth Challenge, which used to be called the Two and Two Challenge, and I'll go over that a little bit. And then in addition to that, we provide support to our association leadership, primarily in the form of Club Excellence. Some training and support for our local association. So I'll go over quite a bit of that and then dig into the resources that we're providing right now that are specific to returning to the rinks and helping you grow membership and helping you connect with your members now while some of your rinks may not be open. So I am going to share my screen here and we'll go over some of the resources that program services has. I know that George is going to monitor the chat here, but I'll try to do my best to get to any questions that anybody might have as we go. And you'll be able to find my contact information. I'm sure George can send that out to everyone as well. So if you think of anything later that we can help you with, we'll make sure that you have a way to contact us. I'll also put it in the chat. So if you need to contact me or anyone on program services team at any time, you can do so. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. All right. So I'm taking you right to the program services website. So it's under usahockey.com/programservices. And so this is where you'll find all of our resources right now. So anything in the form of growth and leadership that we provide for you can be found on this page. And then, of course, right at the top right now, as we get back to trying to get people back in the rink, connecting with your membership, all of our return to rinks resources are right here, easy to find. Want to make sure those are accessible for you. So a little bit lower, so you can find all of our different areas right here as well. But if you click down under the growth side, we've got the Hat Trick Growth Challenge, Try Hockey for Free Days, and Girls Hockey Weekend. So you'll hear me say this a lot as we go through these, but we're doing our best to adjust what our resources are and what guidelines we have for you with regard to COVID and returning to the rinks. We know it's going to be kind of a special situation this year as we go through. So we're in the process. Luckily, we've had some time to reflect and relaunch some things. So you'll see some new platforms to use and new registrations to use that ideally should make things a lot more simple for you. Try Hockey for Free Days, I'll go into first. So if you go to the Try Hockey for Free portion now and you want to register your association for our national dates, those are going to be November 7th and February 20th. And again, we are working on updating some of our guidelines with regard to cleaning equipment and what we're able to provide for you. You know, this has provided a unique challenge to all of you as associations, but also kind of what we can provide to you. So we'll be in touch with those of you that have hosted before and those that are looking to host this year. You're certainly welcome to register your events already. We will not be approving those sites until early August with the anticipation of having a new tryhockeyforfree.com platform. So it should make things easier for you. It should make things a little more explanatory for new families that are coming back to try hockey. We're all hockey people, so we know what kind of goes into that and what a child can expect from a try hockey. But we also know that that new parents might not know it. So we did our best to kind of revamp things and think of how a new hockey parent might be overwhelmed if there wasn't enough information. So in order to avoid the questions that we get all the time and the questions that you as a host site or an association might get, that website's going to really lay it out for the new hockey parent. So that'll be good. And the searchable map will be a little bit better. It'll kind of explain a little bit better what you need to do to register for your event. So again, this site right here is registering as a host site. You're welcome to do so. We just won't be approving those till early August and we'll be in touch with everybody when we're able to do that. A thing that I do want to point out that gets left out a lot of times is you're welcome to use our platform under the tryhockeyforfree.com for non-national dates. So lots of people think that if you're not doing it on those national dates, you don't use our platform. We want you to. It's great. It still keeps your list of players that were at your event organized. It's easy to keep track of them in that area. We, the only difference is that it's not searchable by map. So we send you a direct link to register. I know lots of associations in Michigan utilize that platform. So if you're ever doing it on a non-custome or a non-national date, we can do custom dates for you. The difference is just some of the actual hard resources that we supply to you. We're not able to do so because those are really tailored to our national dates. So if you have more questions about that, please reach out to us. We're happy to help launch that for you, especially as we get back to rinks. Another thing you'll find on our site under these registrations is hopefully, once we have more rinks open and we're able to determine a date, is we'd like to encourage everybody to host a return to rinks. A lot of our resources are in conjunction right now with US Ice Rinks and US Figure Skating because we need everybody back in the rink so we can keep hockey rolling and keep those rinks open. So that'll be something you'll see from us too and something you're able to register for. Girls Hockey Weekend, kind of similar right now. We're waiting on dates from the double IHF. This is really to celebrate girls. It's a double IHF initiative, but obviously, USA Hockey is a national governing body in the United States, really. We encourage you to celebrate girls and do things specifically to, you know, encourage girls to play within your association and celebrate those that are already there. So once we have dates, you'll hear more about that. Unfortunately, as like with most of you, a lot of our programming's a little bit up in the air with these annual events that we host. So we hope to have more information on that soon. I am going to go over our Hat Trick Growth Challenge. Again, we are looking to kind of revamp that to make sure that it meets the unique requirements of how the season's going to go. We, really with the Hat Trick Growth Challenge, if you've participated in the Two and Two Challenge, this is the Two and Two Challenge just repackaged for you so that it's a little bit easier to kind of customize to your association. It's a little bit more flexible. It's really, it's a guide to drive eight and under participation in your local association. So it typically encompasses events that you're already doing, things that you're already participating in. But really, we want to help remind you to do those things and give you a little bit more guidance on it. This isn't us telling you, you need to do more. It's here as a support tool for you. And in the past, we've been able to reward you for meeting different levels of the Hat Trick Growth Challenge or the Two and Two Challenge, and we hope to do that again. So the three main drivers of participation and growth are retention, acquisition, and conversion. So what the Hat Trick Growth Challenge does is allow you to pick pieces from each of those in order to keep growing within your association. And as you know, if you've participated before, have. If you haven't, we really focus on growth at the eight and under level because that's where we see the largest influx and the most impact on growing your association. But there are definitely retention pieces in there, too. So we are working right now to update what will fall under each of these categories. Again, to kind of meet this unique situation so that we're providing the best resources for you. We know that it'll be a different year. So some of the pieces that we're normally used to doing, we may not be able to do. So soon, we'll be rolling that out. If you want more information on that or if it's something you haven't participated in, but you're interested in it, please let us know and we'll make sure we get you on that list for when we have those updated resources available. Again, just to reiterate, this is the former Two and Two Growth Challenge, which, when I moved over to program services a couple of years ago, kind of figured out that no one really knew what the Two and Two. I can see Kevin smiling. He knows. We asked people, what does the Two and Two Growth Challenge mean? And we got a lot of interesting answers. So we changed it to the Hat Trick Growth Challenge. Really, it's those three buckets of growth. So we wanted to make sure that that was a little more flexible and made more sense for our associations. So that was a real quick rundown of what those are. Katie? Yep?
There is a question here. It says, if you use the USA Hockey website to register your local event, does USA Hockey do any follow-up marketing hits on the association's behalf?
So we have not done it on the association's behalf. So when you do our national dates, it's kind of twofold. So yes and no, George. Great question. When you register with Try Hockey for Free, so on those national dates, we always do a follow-up kind of membership push on behalf of the associations. So in the past, as most of you know, six and under was free. And then beyond that, it was just the annual registration fee. So what we do is two separate emails. So we send an email out to families of those six and under players, reminding them to register for USA Hockey, talking about the benefits of being a member of USA Hockey and encouraging them to register for the season, sending them a direct link. And then same thing, it's just a little bit different message for those paid memberships of six and above. So those are the ones we do now. Although Kevin and I have kind of been brainstorming about how we can do better connection pieces for any players that might have been part of Try Hockey for Free. Again, as we move into these, it's going to be a different season. So we want to help you guys connect. So those are things we're looking at. Yes, they definitely get a follow-up on those national dates. Right now, we don't necessarily send a follow-up on the non-national dates, but it's something that we've been discussing doing in the past. So, or in the future, I apologize. But great question.
So I have one other question. If you use the registration to do your local events, is that just something that you just get a link that you have to pass around? Or is there like a site that people can search and find the different events that are out there?
So it is a custom link that you would need to use to send out to any potential interested families or post to your website or, you know, your social media. So it's a custom link. The reason that we do that, the only dates that are searchable for try hockey events are the two national dates. So it takes you to a map and then you put in your zip code and it shows you events around you on those national dates. The reason that we've kept it to national dates, we've discussed opening it up to be searchable to other dates. We're still leaving it flexible that we may be able to do that in the future. The reason we do it only for the national dates is really to avoid confusion. So that if somebody went and searched, you know, any zip code in Michigan, the national dates, especially for the non-hockey parent, we want them, those are the dates we really push national marketing for. And we didn't want it to be confusing. So we didn't want to have somebody register. You know, if I register an event in Colorado Springs in December, say not on our national date, and somebody searches it and sees, oh, Colorado Springs is hosting Try Hockey for Free. What we didn't want is those participants who registered to accidentally show up on November 7th, when really, we're not hosting a date until maybe December or some other custom date. So unfortunately, at this time, it's not searchable. We did that because that has happened in the past when they've been searchable on the map. You have families show up to a rink that's not actually hosting on that date. And really, we just want it to be the best experience for those new families. So right now, it's a custom link, but it still uses that online tool. So when families register, they're already signing the IMR through USA Hockey versus having to do it in person when they arrive at the rink. So it kind of simplifies that process. But yeah, currently, if you do a custom date, it's just a, it's a specific link to register. So if there's no other questions on the growth side, George, I'm going to move into some of the Club Excellence updates that we're making. Under the lead category here, again, I mentioned that we provide support to our association leadership. So Club Excellence, I told Kevin this and it's not a knock on him, but he's heard me say this lots of times before I was in the department. When you'd hear a presentation about what Club Excellence is, it really sounded like it was another thing that you had to participate in and that we were telling you to do more. And we know really, our volunteers are really the heartbeat of what we do. So it sounded like we were giving you more to do. And that's not what Club Excellence is. Club of Excellence really is a tool for you. It's a support piece for local associations to kind of guide them through a season. One thing we knew we were really good at at USA Hockey was providing resources to coaches and officials and those people that are on the ice. And what we needed to do a better job was supporting our association leadership, the people within our associations that really make everything work and make a season run. And so what Club Excellence is, is really a tool to help you do so. So it sounds like it's a lot of extra work and it's really, that's not the intention. The intention is to help you make your season run a little bit more smoothly. Lead with intent. We give you resources that maybe you hadn't thought of before. So board governance pieces, financial pieces, the not sexy part of hockey that nobody wants to talk about, legal guidance, things that you have to really meet if you're a nonprofit board. The, unfortunately, last year, we lost a season with Club Excellence. The good part is it gave us the opportunity to revamp it. So we'll be relaunching Club Excellence. We've seen a lot of staging of it. We're ready to test it. We're hoping that right away in early August, we'll be able to approve season or approve associations for the season. So basically, what it does is it takes you through month by month, things you might need to be doing within your association. And the cool part about the new system is it'll have the ability, you won't have to necessarily log back in and check it every week and see what you've done and what you haven't done, but it'll give you the ability to set yourself email and text reminders of certain things. So for example, you know, if a president of association wants to make sure that all their coaches are registered, you have the ability to set a reminder, you know, every month if you want to, within lots of things, within Club Excellence, to send yourself reminders to take care of those specific things. And as we come out of this and everybody gets back to work and and gets back to work, and we want to make sure that we're helping you make the hockey side of your life a little bit easier if you're running an association. So again, I keep saying, we're relaunching a lot of stuff. So not a lot of stuff's ready to go, but we want to make sure that it's really ready and really can help you run through a season. So it really serves as guidance. We will, when we relaunch the system, because it'll look a little bit different than the old system in a good way. The old system was a little bit hard to navigate. This new one will be easy. It'll have a great dashboard for you so you can see kind of your progress throughout the season. Again, set those reminders for yourself, a little bit cleaner look, more searchable, easier to. We have global tasks that we'll put in there that we know associations have to take care of throughout the season. You'll have the ability to add custom tasks for your association. You'll have the ability to see affiliate-specific resources. So if you're in an association within Michigan, Maha can upload resources for you that you can see. So you won't just necessarily have the national resources, but you'll have your affiliate and state resources as well. So we're really excited about the new system. It'll be easier for us and you for a support piece. So we will definitely be reaching out and we'll host webinars and kind of interactive training on when that relaunches to make sure that you understand everything. And of course, as with all of this, we'll be available to answer any questions. We can run your whole board through it. We're really here to help you and we want to make sure that Club Excellence is a more useful tool and a little bit more user-friendly moving forward. So I ran that through that quick, but I did want to get to our resources part about returning to rinks because I do think this is pretty important right now. George and I talked about this a little bit. So under program services, resources, and if you go to that homepage and it says return to rinks resources, you can click there as well or you can find it under the resources tab of our part of the website. We've got several resources that exist for you right now. So the returning to rinks document is a collaboration between USA Hockey, US Ice Rink Association, and US Figure Skating. Again, because we're all in this together to get our arenas back open and functioning. And so what you'll find in the return to rinks document specifically, we find we get a lot of questions about why has USA Hockey not mandated certain things? It's because every state and then sometimes, in some cases, every county might have different regulations, especially with regard to health regulations. So a lot of what you'll find in returning to rinks is make sure you're communicating with your rinks. Now's a great time to get together with them, make sure you're on the same page, make sure that you understand their policies so you can pass it along to your families. You know, we know communication is key really all of the time, but we can't stress that enough right now. So a lot of it is referring to local information and then really connecting with your ice rink that you, you know, your home rink. So you're ready and prepared for when you are back in the rink, if you're not already, what their regulations are going to be so that you meet it and you're ready to go. And we can all kind of work on this together. So a lot of that refers to contacting, you know, it's all local resources. For you as associations right now, we've provided a return to rinks toolkit that was sent out both by us and by Maha. So you probably received it in several different ways and that was on purpose. We wanted to make sure we have a consistent message moving forward. So within the return to rinks toolkit, it does take a little bit to download and we're going to separate out some things and update them as we keep moving through the situation and we get back to rinks opening. This is really a toolkit for you to connect with your members. So to keep our messaging consistent, to give you tools that were really just plug and play for you as an association to connect, we know that you need membership just like we do so that you can start planning for your season. And we wanted to make it easy for you to do so, easy for people to find if they participate within your association. So really, what the return to rinks toolkit is, is plug and play items for you to use as your local association. So I'm going to show you a couple of samples of what that looks like. So within the toolkit, there's emails, there's hockey activities, there's posters you can use. The social media stuff is really, really useful and I'll kind of show you a sample of what that looks like. And then we've got web banners that you can use to put on your own website. Again, to keep the messaging consistent. And within all of these, we've, we really encourage you to, we've got all the USA Hockey, it's all over everything, obviously, if it came from the national office. But we really want you as your local association to put your stamp on it as well. So really encourage you to use your local association logo, add it to all of these resources so that it really, you know, we're all in this together. You guys are USA Hockey. But add your local association information as a connection piece to your players and your family. So there's email templates in here that you can use. There's instructions on how do you utilize that HTML email. There are some that are, there's an email directed specifically for youth associations. There's also for adults. We know adult hockey's huge. They're itching to get back in the rink, maybe even more than the kids. So there's emails to help you. Hockey's back. We know it's back. I think this week, we can all agree, it's really exciting, the NHL announced dates. So really take advantage of that time. We haven't seen sports in so long. You know, your families are going to be excited to watch hockey. I know I am. So connect with those players and we're trying to make it easy for you with these emails. Within the social media piece, so we know that there's phases listed in each state, right? So lots of states are going through phases. I do want to be specific that these phases here don't necessarily meet your state phases. So these are what we have internally at USA Hockey called our Phase One, Two, and Three. And they're really conversation starters or social media pieces. It's again, plug and play for you to use to connect with your membership that's already within your hockey family. So for us, Phase One would be our rinks aren't open, which I think most rinks at least are talking about opening, if they aren't already. But these are pieces you can use. If your rinks aren't open, this really just helps you connect with your membership and kind of keep hockey on their mind. Phase Two for us would be rinks are opening soon. So if you know your rinks are getting ready to open, this is a way to kind of get families hyped up and excited. Again, kind of a membership push so you can start planning for what your activities might be within your association. And then Phase Three is your rinks are open. So it's getting people excited. It's reminding them they can register. It's reminding them they can get back in the rink. And then what we've done within these is provided you graphics. So we encourage you to use photos and videos of players within your own association so it's familiar to those other kids and families. And we all, it's more exciting to see the people you know within your association. But if you don't have pictures, if you don't have videos of players in your own association, we provided them for you as well. So, you know, those visuals of getting back to hockey are really important. So I will show you the example. So Phase Three. So this is our Phase Three, rinks are open, social media plan. It gives you a lot of, you know, most of us know how to use our Facebook and Twitter and all that, but we want to make sure that we give you plug and play and information. So we made it easy for you. So here's all the, this would just be wording that you could use. Again, directing back to membership, including photo of players. It tells you exactly what to do on these. And then, you know, tag a friend or teammate to come skate with you this week. Kind of interactive for your players. We know they're all on social media. Parents probably, still a lot of us are on Facebook. So utilize those Facebook platforms to connect with the parents. A lot of this is connecting with your players, but also it would be, you know, parent education piece. So I'd encourage you, if you know that you have certain policies in place at your rink and you can start preparing families for that, to include that as well. So we provide all of this for you. There's a ton of information in here. And then we've got a lot of photos, stock photos. Obviously, we all know how much hockey makes us laugh. You want to make sure you're showing the exciting stuff that's coming back. We think, you know, we know a lot of the media surrounding everything right now can be really negative. So giving players that reminder that hockey's good for your mental health and physical health. And we know they want to socialize with their friends and we know it's going to be a little bit different, but everyone's going to feel good when they get back on the ice. So we've provided all of that for you here. There's lots of different graphics for you to use. So the social media piece would really be, you know, connecting with your membership. But then the graphics that we've provided for you is really hockey's back. It's celebrating the fact that we know hockey's back. Again, touching on the NHL, it's great news that we have dates. It's going to be on TV for a long time every day. So celebrating hockey's back. A lot of these have direct links to the membership page that, again, you can start getting people to renew their memberships and get planning for the season. So that, there's a lot in the toolkit. If you have any questions or again, if you want us to run through it with your local association specifically, if you need any help with different communication pieces, if you see any of our national communication pieces on any of our social media websites and you want them customized for your local association, our communication department has just been awesome to work with through this. We've, I would say, Kevin and I talk about this a lot in an unprecedented way. We've had a ton of overlap with other departments, especially communications, and they're willing to help customize anything for your local association as well. So if you reach out to us, we can connect you on any of that. If you need us to run through anything more in-depth for your local association, we're happy to do so. As we kind of move into August, we're going to add some updates to the toolkit and we'll make sure to let everybody know. We saw a really cool video the other day out of Maryland where they actually took a video of their own players on the ice and it was an information piece on, here's what you can expect when you come back to the rink. You know, the coaches are all on face masks. They were talking about how their practices will run. They were talking about the policies and procedures for when players enter the rink or on the ice. And so the cool part about that was that then it was a parent education piece and they got to send it to their parents so that they could prepare for it. And those kids then could also see their teammates or other players in their association back at the rink and kind of gain support. So they've had great feedback on it. We're hoping to provide a little bit of an outline for something like that to make it, again, plug and play for you. We don't want you to have to, you know, overthink what you need to do to get in touch with your associations and your families. We really want to make it plug and play for you and be a support tool for you. So that toolkit's really, really useful. We're separating it out so it's easy for you to kind of pick and choose what you want to use. But if you see something in there that you think's really cool, we'd love to hear it. If you feel like there's pieces missing that could be more useful for your local association, we'd love to hear that as well. We want to know what you need. We have talked to lots of associations and that's where all of this was bred out of. But, you know, Kevin and I are sitting trying to rack our brains. What can we do to support our associations better? And so if you have ideas, we definitely want to hear them. So we're always open to that. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I'm going to put my contact information in the chat here. You're welcome to reach out to me if you hear back ever. Taylor Gross is the newest member of the program services team as well. So you'll hear back from either of us. There's a main program services email. And Taylor and I are always willing to help in any way that we can. Again, don't hesitate to ask if we can do a Zoom specific to your association, whether it's on return to rinks, if it's Club Excellence, if it's about best practices for try hockey, we're always happy to do that. So I'm going to throw that up in the chat here. And if there aren't any more questions, I'm going to stick around for the next couple of presentations as well. So if anything pops up, feel free to. To throw any questions in there and I'll jump in as needed, but otherwise I'll turn it back over to George.
Thanks Katie. I think you said too, that there's going to be some webinars once Club Excellence relaunches again too, right?
Yeah. So we actually have some webinars up as well. I would encourage you that toolkit, if you're confused about. Glad you brought up the webinars. You'll find those under the resources tab of the website as well. We've started doing some webinars on different items. There's a communicating with your members webinar that's really useful and our communications team ran through that toolkit. So gave a little bit more in depth on good ideas and ways to use that. There's one on marketing your association for growth and then. We'll do webinars that are a little bit more training specific, George. So we could definitely do that for associations specifically in Michigan and we'll be reaching out with that information as well.
And where did you say you find the pre-recorded ones again?
They're under the resources tab. So all of that. They're all under resources. So.
We'll probably re-link that on our website as well. So I'll look for that. All right. Any other questions for Katie? I don't see anything in chat or Q and A. All right. Thank you, Katie. At this time, and Katie just put her information in there. I was going to do the same thing, but she beat me to it. That's good. I'm going to turn this over to Kevin Erlinbach. Kevin, the assistant executive director of membership at USA Hockey. Kevin's been doing a lot of work in the. Diversity and inclusion area in the last, I don't know, 18 months, two years, something like that or so. And Kevin's going to talk to you a little bit about today about cultural competency. I think it's. Definitely an opportunity that we have going forward to become more educated and eventually be able to. Use cultural, cultural competency to help us. Reach out to some different demographics that are developing within our, within our communities to be able to. Make hockey for everybody. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin.
Thanks, George. All right. Let me share the screen here. Let me pump this up here. So just to go through stuff here, things that fall under. The many buckets that I get to work with here is, is obviously Katie and the program services group. You know, Kim Folsom, who are membership servicing, our adult hockey, disabled hockey. And newest pieces are diversity, equity and inclusion piece. I'm very, very fortunate that while I, I get to work with all these people. I'm definitely not the expert. I have really great directors. Katie, you just heard obviously. How imperative and fantastic she is. And I just try and help and advocate. The other thing that's really changed, changed me personally and changed. Us, you know, and it's changed as quickly as an organization is that just over a year ago, we were able to hire. Our first director of diversity, inclusion, Stephanie Jackson, who's. Brought an expertise that, that's really, really helped us. In, in an area that you think you, you have an idea and then you, and you start stepping in and evaluating. How you think, how you interact, how our sport lives and breathes and you realize how. How far we are actually away and how much change and growth we all have. So. As you can imagine, as, as the climate and the world is, is changed just in the past couple of months, she is extremely, extremely busy. So she was tied up for today. So, you know, as someone that tries to help and advocate and, and support her as best, I said, you know what, I'll, I'll give. At least, least initial overview of what's going on at USA Hockey and, and tools and resources and things that. Are available to everyone here to help start the conversation, but. By far, I'm not the, the go-to contact. Stephanie is, is got an expertise. She came to us from Nike and was a passionate hockey fan, very passionate expert. On driving social change and, and she is, she wants to make it aware and want to make sure she's definitely a go-to and available similar to Katie for growth. Throughout this. So I'm just giving a little bit of some notes and some overview that we've been working on just specifically really over the past year. So. You know, in, in our world, you know, we have a very special universe. Hockey is a special place, but. There is a lot and the more we dug in and the more we learned, there is a lot of incidents and stories of racism. Discrimination, just even avoidance from leadership and people to approach these conversations and engage. You, it, it's hard to say and. I apologize, my daughter's making a lot of noise in the background. So sorry for any background noise. You don't want to believe it because we love our sport and there's a lot of great people, but the more you talk to. Families and people of color and, and, and let me say this isn't just, it's not a race thing. Diversity, equity, inclusion includes LGBTQ plus, includes email empowerment, making sure not just on the ice, but. You know, making sure we have female empowerment, female support and inclusion. In our, in our boardrooms and our boards of our associations that we have equal voices. It includes disabled hockey, which we've done a pretty good job, but can you do more? It, it includes something we never thought of before, but I've learned Steph's taught me is. Is mental health. That, that is also. Diversity, equity, inclusion. So we have to get past just the race component, but it's an important piece. But the more we talk to families within this realm, you realize how actually prevalent it is. And, and I mean, youth hockey and our clubs are a community-based sport. We try and work to represent our community, but. The more we dig in, do we really know? What our community looks like? Are we actually serving our, our community around our rink? The families around our rink appropriately and, and providing them. And so. The piece here where I say exclusion versus inclusion. Nobody intentionally is excluding anybody. I don't think anybody. Every, I hear from a lot of people that say, oh, I, I welcome everybody. I want everyone to come into our, into our rink, but. Until we actually go out and engage people and invite people and engage in conversation with them, we're not really being. Inclusive. We're not welcoming people into our rink. We're just saying the doors are open and. And really what diversity, inclusion means is diversity is, is the people at the table having, making sure we have. Everyone from different components and fabrics and corners of our, our universe here. And inclusion is how they all work together. Hold on one second. Hey girls, can you please be quiet? Apologies. Sorry about that. The, the wonders of, of working remotely during this time. Include each other and works together. And so I, I've heard this quote from actually a lot of people where we, we ask, hey, what, why, why wouldn't you put your kid in hockey? And they hear the stories of even if the referee doesn't hear, let's say a slander or. Or something, you know, what's called a microaggression. So people say something not intentionally hurtful, but it's, it's actually quite biased and hurtful. And as a parent in, in your, when you're looking at stuff for your child, if you hear these things that, that are happening. Why would you willingly put your child in that situation? It doesn't feel like it's something for you. So we need to work together to drive this change. To all look at ourselves and all self-evaluate and evaluate organizations of, of what we're really about. So just listening over the past year, some initial steps that we've taken internally as an organization. Is we started dialogue. Dialogue is part of what we do with our board and our regional leadership. Every meeting now, you know, it's gone from something that once in a while we talked about to, it's, it's a priority of just in our annual congress recently. It was. We held several town halls and meetings for everyone to. Let them know that this is something we have to, we have to talk and continue to have the conversation about constantly. We, almost two years ago, we started a DNI task force, which with Stephanie's direction and help. It's really accelerated and their voices become stronger. And let me say it's a task force because it's, it doesn't have, with a task force, it has less. Transit regulations around it where it can go and work a little more freer and, and, and connect and work with a lot more components of USA Hockey. I think one of the most important things I've ever been a part of is the hiring of, I know I'm pumping her tires and she's not here to hear it, but I, I'm. If I implore all of you to reach out to Stephanie and have a conversation with her. And start that conversation. She's, she's changed my life personally, the way I interact in the world. And she's changed us very rapidly in a year. It's. We're sometimes in our world, because USA Hockey is so massive. If, I mean, we have 1.2 million members and a lot of structure. Change can be hard and it happens, but it's a slow process. In this realm, she's made an immense amount of progress in a short amount of time. Things we're looking forward internally is, is how do we strategically align. Diversity, inclusion pieces in all facets of USA Hockey. So what I mean is, is we don't want DNI to be. Something that sits out here, that's its own beast, that people just say, oh, it's just DNI that's over there, that, that, that's just a separate thing like. Coaching, coaching education is a separate thing over here and they, they operate their own world over here. DNI has to be a part of the DNA and. The fabric of everything that we do, coaching. You know, recruitment, just even operating a governance piece, it's got to be. Essential to, to how we operate and everything if we're really going to make that change. And that's what we're trying to work through with everybody in the organization. So that it's not a separate entity. It's part of how we conduct business. Also going forward is that we're going to be engaging in very extensive training opportunities. Now, when I'm talking. Extensive, it's not like, and I'm not trying to make of other training that lives in our world. It's not watching an hour long video, answering a couple of questions and also your culture competent. That's just not. The way it is. This isn't going to be ongoing conversations. And you never, no matter what, this training is never going to end. This conversation is never going to end. There's never a point where. Humans, humans are built with bias. That's just the way we are. Like everybody has a bias, whether you mean to or not. And so we have to constantly look and evolve and, and, and try and think of, hold on one second. Hey girls, 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 I'm on a video piece. Apologies again. So we have to look at and evaluate. Where we are and how do we make the hockey rink and youth hockey a safe and positive environment for everybody and it'll make us stronger that way. So internally, the education we recently partnered with. It, it's white men for, for full diverse partners. They are one of the worldwide leaders in, in this training. And diversity, inclusion. They're, they, they do companies all over the world. Actually, they're recommended to us from the National Hockey League. Kim Davis and her team can oversee the social impact and growth component, legislation for. For the NHL and she, she really believes in what they do. And I've been through some of the training and it's extremely impressive. So with this partnership. Our executive board, our senior leadership, all our staff. The USA Hockey board and affiliate leaders are going to go through 13 months of extensive training. So monthly, I'm not talking. 20 minute deal. It's going to be two hours plus homework, plus. Extra resources and training that all our leaders, if we're going to before go out and welcome people into the rink, we first have to be culturally competent. And we, we, we have to be taking the steps to being better leaders and, and understanding what a positive inclusive environment means before we start. Saying, hey, everyone jumps in the rink. We have to make sure we understand. What are, once again, what our community looks like and needs. So that's something internally that we are, we've started the process and. Externally, some of the things, some initial steps we've made is, is, you know, two years ago, we added the question race simplicity. That seems like a small thing, but. It's good in the sense that it, it helps us understand what our membership looks like more and where we're growing, where we're not growing and. And who we're actually engaging with and, and help us better understand. Who our families are with USA Hockey. Last fall, we did, there was a presidential. Think of the candidate language right now, presidential directive on the new, new match penalty. That was a game misconduct before, but now it's a match. For any racial derogatory slurs. Now, while penalties are fine and discipline is fine. That's not going to make us more culturally competent. So that is a step. But we have to be more forthcoming and more. Compared to aggressive of trying to make sure that we're evaluating, educating ourselves. We don't want to be just all disciplinary. penalties because that's not going to make us grow as an organization. Some other things that have happened, we held our first DNI symposium in Boston. Where we had an open, honest conversation around hockey, where we've been for the past 20 years and what we can do going forward. We started engagement series around race and culture. We had our first one of those in. In Minnesota, Minneapolis and Steph did a phenomenal job where she brought in. We had Scott Gomez's dad, Carlos. We had. We had Rico up in Flint who recently won the Willie O'Ree award and his programs he does there. We had. Local community organizations right there by the rink that, that work with. You know, we had a woman that works on sports for, for young women, Muslim women and trying to get them in sport. And she was right there in the community and she didn't know there was a rink there that was, she drove past every day. And so we had many groups there. So just trying to teach the organization there and as we're going forward that these organizations and, and. In potential partners exist near in your community. So how do we engage them? Things we've also done is being intentional with our imagery and our messaging. A big thing to being. To, to growing as an organization, helping people know that we want to be more inclusive and want more diverse. Community is, you have to be intentional, just even in our imagery, you go back and look, I'm. All of a sudden, it's a little terrifying how little. Representation of people of color or, or content. We had people of LGBTQ with what we do, two plus. Letting them know that they're a part of hockey. So we've been trying to do a lot of, hey, I don't even notice in the month of June, we changed USA Hockey logo. To, to support Pride Month. So things like that, that we want to really make sure out front, I, I challenge all of you. And things you put out flyers and, and content in your web, are you putting on inclusive imagery to let people know that you. Are an organization that has people of all colors. And races and creeds and everything along those lines. So like I said before, DEI, so diversity, equity, inclusion. Includes female, disabled and traditionally we've done a pretty good job, especially on participation side. You know, we recently had. Email leadership symposium in Anaheim, obviously before COVID. And even that was eye-opening. They hear from female leaders from all over the country say, share their feelings, how they don't feel like their voice is always considered. As strong as eagles. So we have to evaluate that piece as well and, and really continue to evolve. To get a greater culture and equity focus. So external things that, that you can see going forward is, is we're working. As we're learning and, and we just want to put messaging out and say, this is what we believe in. It has to be, we're learning and engaging, having deep conversations so. That when we put out messaging, it's authentic. And it's not just words that we live in. It's so, you know, we've been, it's got to start at the top and go down. So our leadership has been. Really having. Their uncomfortable conversations, but necessary conversations to really understand. What we're about and, and put that message out. And as we go down, we, we implore all of you to explore your own messaging and start putting out to your, your leaders in your community. We're, we're trying to increase opportunities for all members to engage in this conversation. So it's just not something done at the board level. Where local programs can't. Or don't get the opportunity to hear what our leaders are saying. So keep your eye out for that because we want to make sure that this is something that everyone can hear and think. As an entire 360 organization. We've been looking at partnerships, so hands to reach. And a lot of these things, as, as we're talking about it, these are all things that you can do as well. And I'll. Specify a little more in the coming slides, but just think of how you could do each one of these things in your own local. Youth hockey program. And we're, we're part of a ton more training and resource opportunities for not just. Youth hockey members, but and parents, but for our coaches and officials and leaders. So. One of the things that is going is, as we said, education is vital. Another partnership we did and. And I want you to know how historic these, these partnerships, partnerships and education has never had before. We've had. Education available from professionals out in the field that have expertise in this from every level and facet of our organization. To, that is available to the 1.2 million members of USA Hockey. So. We have also partnered with RISE. So RISE is a sports specific. Organization does education, training. It stands for the Ross Institute for Sport Equality. The owner of the Miami Dolphins saw need for this and started this organization. They're, they are tremendous. I've been through a bunch of the training and. And especially in, they're more community-based. The, the white men for whole diversity partners is more corporate based. So that's why we don't staff. This one is very community-based and there's exceptions. So here's the very cool part about RISE is that they're doing a year-long training. And it's available to everybody. Every USA Hockey member can be in part of this conversation and training and it's live. So. You have to attend these because it is, it's not the one hour video and now all of a sudden click, I'm. I've accomplished, I guess, certificate and I'm culturally competent. It just doesn't exist. These will be ongoing for years. So we're going to get through the year and we're going to stop and. And as Stephanie says a lot, I, I steal the word, we're going to pivot. We're going to see where our needs have evolved to and see if. The rise that we need is the separate organization and provide education for everyone. So this is ongoing conversation. This is. Comes from a community engagement fund that Michigan and all of our affiliates are putting the money forward to make sure that all of you have this chance. So. Next week, we'll send an all user email to all members. Let them know about the first rise. training opportunity on identity on seven twenty four. And we need your support. We need you to engage in these and 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 attend these live webinar training sessions, but we need you to push for your your coaches, your officials, your board, your your parents, everybody to engage in these and have real, honest, uncomfortable, it is uncomfortable, but it you, as you reflect conversations so that we come stronger as an organization. This isn't something that we can just do at the national office. This is something that can be just done at the Michigan amateur level. This is something that's gotta be done for every single member of USA Hockey, if we're truly going to years down the road be stronger and become, you know, we say it a lot, I used to say it, I don't say it anymore because I I I wonder sometimes, I used to use the line that we wanna be the that we say that we're the best youth sport option every community. Well, I I want us to think about that, are we truly the best youth sport option? And and I think through ongoing training and engagement, we can become that best youth sport option. So sorry to beat the drum here and beat on this a little bit, but I need everybody to to really, really take the time and leverage this great resource from RISE and and we'll be sending it out and we hope you support that message and drive it down to all your local members. So some local opportunities, these are things that that are for you that you can do. You may act like you ask, well, I'm just the local youth hockey president, what can I really do to just change? Well, you are the most, you're way more important than me. As I used analogy, and I was joking, you know, why do I pay attention when my local association sends me an email or engages me in something versus when USA Hockey sends it? Well, I give USA Hockey forty six dollars. I give the local association several hundred dollars for my kids to play. So no different than the local schools is that the state or the school district sends me emails, I don't pay attention. When the school sends me an email, I I pay attention. So you are the driver. You are the most important person for us to drive a more inclusive and and safe and inviting place. So as you can imagine, over the last few months, there's been a huge cry for racial equality and justice. It's keeping Stephanie working. You know, she's amassing massive hours. I had a tease the other day where she she didn't get something done she really wanted to get done. I said, you know, you have to sleep at the same time too. So within that, USA Hockey, as I said, is engaging, sensing uncomfortable conversations. We we ask that you do the same thing, that you start having those conversations within your board and in or in your members and start doing that. And from those conversations, the same as us, we're we're finding action items that'll give you a path forward to start. And then once again, as I said, it doesn't ever end. You're gonna get to through some of those action items and then you're gonna have to having more conversations and you're gonna come up with more, a different path and it's gonna go on forever. You know, I'm gonna repeat myself, but I can't underestimate how important it is for you to to attend those RISE sessions and and use it and follow up with your your members and your board afterwards and ask them, you know, ask they're asking people, how can we drive change and inclusion after each one? Some other suggestions for your path forward is is make a statement, work together to have a statement to put out in support of diversity. Making a statement, an honest statement, it just can't be words. You have to have a conversation with your board and put it on your website, declaring on your social media, let people know what you're about and what you're trying to become. None of us are there yet, but but we have to work towards it and we have to take those first steps. And hey, you might take those first steps and you might flop a little bit or you may realize that wasn't the full thing and but we're taking steps. We just can't be conservative and hiding in this world. We have to make statements. We have to take steps forward and we have to learn and pivot. Something you should do is appoint a diversity chair and or create a Black Indigenous and People of Color interest committee. I would even challenge that that Michigan amateur look at doing this. Recently, the Atlantic affiliate and New York affiliate both appointed a chair. Stephanie can help with development for your local program on what to look for and what this means and and what, how these people would would help influence your board. Start hosting your own round tables and town halls with your members to have these conversations. Once again, conversation, education. If you haven't told her, figured that out from my presentation here, it is is a massive driver. You can't just be a passive listener. You have to be active within all this. Some resources that that are available now or coming soon is there's a toolkit that I will send. It's it's not posted, I'll actually send it to George, distribute. We have to, it's going on a new inclusion page, but Steph put together toolkit and how to how to have a constructive conversation around race because it's not an easy conversation. So how do we start pulling that together? Right now, Steph's working with her our communications team to pull together a whole diversity inclusion page that'll be up shortly. Another thing that just launched two weeks ago that Stephanie's been a big part of with the NHL is is a content page, some additional resources around race, allyship and awareness. And here's her contact information, you know, she gave me some notes here on this page. I'm trying to make sure I don't miss any here, but engage her. I mean, that's what she's here for. She's here to help give you some guidance and direction. But she can do it for you. She's going, you're gonna be challenged. She challenges me all the time and and you're gonna have to stop and think and really have true conversations, but she can help you on that path. And I added this in here, it it doesn't totally relate, but it does too. This came from the NHL, from the social impact. So this relates a lot with COVID, but it actually relates with a lot of stuff done with millennial research. Just what we know is that today's parents, really specifically, those are the parents that are coming is 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 the organizations that they're tying themselves to. It can't just be a hockey organization. You may say yourself, and we used to say this, well, we're a hockey organization, we don't worry about hockey. That doesn't happen anymore. You, people, if they're gonna attach themselves to a brand or a sport or say that, you know, we're a hockey family and things like that. They need to know that the organization represents the same social values that they do and personal beliefs and and they wanna be a part of that. And so through all this, you're actually, you'll help yourself grow in the long run. Obviously, we we have a culture change before we can worry about growth, but people that do good and are socially responsible, make social impact, will find more people that wanna be a part of that. You just can't be silenced is is almost negativity in a sense. So some outcomes that we're hoping that happens is is that we we, the hockey rink is an environment where we feel accepted and welcome. There's tons of, through all this, I wanna reiterate, there's a ton of fantastic stuff. And the hockey rink is a very special place. We just need to make sure that 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 more people have the seat at that table and and know what that's about. In the long run, we're gonna grow. When people start realizing the strength that comes from being diverse and and inclusive, more people are gonna wanna be about part of it and 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 more parts of your community are gonna wanna be a part of it. And and hockey, what I think makes us special and between the locker room and the things we teach the ADM and the things we we teach overall is that hockey is more than just athletic development, it's social, mental, emotional development. And that's you know, what will help us become the best youth sport option in every community is that we just don't provide your kids with exercise. We provide your kids with a way to develop as as great human beings and great citizens in the community. And I think that's maybe more and more important every day, especially now when you talk about the limits of school to kids. I know I got an email the other day and my kids may only be going to school two days a week. So they may, and even then, who knows how there's gonna be space for their kids. Lunches are just gonna be much more limited and things like that. And so to build that social awareness and education, it's gonna be very digital. So we need we need to really, really step up our game and show that we're an organization that's looking towards providing that overall growth component to our families. That I'll I'll jump out of this. So it looks like there might be some questions that I'll try to answer and some I may have to, you know, connect to Steph because once again, she is our expert and I am the support advocate for her. So let me see if I can find these questions here.
There's definitely one pending in the chat area there.
Yep. So any language, model language and association can adopt into their bylaws, constitution, website, around promoting diversity inclusion. Similar is their model language around more granularly defining on ice behavior violations related to DNI. So there is, I I would say the good thing to do is look at, we we have it posted on USA Hockey. What's about us, our our language we added recently and what we stand for, DNI, would say, take a look at that. I would say engage Stephanie for some direction so that she can give you some, she can't provide you with the language, she's she's gonna ask you questions and help you think and and have that conversation within yourself so that you guys can say what it means to you. But there is associations that have done it too, that if you started, I I you just, I've Googled some local youth hockey associations, there's some really phenomenal ones that I would say reference and use as you start having that conversation. The on ice behavior stuff, that that's coming as those resources and trainings come in for coaches and officials and things like that, that I wouldn't say that's ready yet. It's being written, there's, Steph provides an immense amount of resources that that our communications team is forming to, that would better connect with our associations and our leaders. So that'll go on that diversity and inclusion webpage. So hope that answers the best. It's, we've been running fast and furious in this this realm because there's, we we have a lot to do. And while we've got a lot done, there's still so much more to do. Any other questions from anybody? Yeah, I'll turn it back over to George. Obviously, I'm available, but you know, in this realm, I I don't wanna get in the way. Same thing with Katie. I always say go to Katie because she's the one that's my expert going every day on this. And same thing with Steph. It's is as I just try and be the best advocate and 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 push to help support. So, George?
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Katie. For those of you that are maybe new to our organization, you know, these two people here are tremendous resources. Kevin used to be our program services director for our area for I don't know how many years you were, Kevin, but you're a tremendous, you've been a tremendous resource to Michigan over the years and I'm I'm sure that you'll continue to be available to people that that need help as well. So thanks for that. We're gonna change up the schedule just a little bit. I had next, I had technology update, but actually, we're gonna do a little player safety roundtable. And if you give me just one second here, I'm gonna bring in Rick Fresker here. Hang on one second here. I just need, oops, where'd he go? Oh, I can't do that. Hey, hey, Mike, can you bring Rick Fresker over to the panelist's side? I forgot, I'm not the host anymore. You bring Rick Fresker in. So this afternoon, Rick and I are gonna have a little panel discussion with you about some safety issues. Obviously, safety is a high priority for USA Hockey and Michigan amateur hockey. We also have Jason Reynolds on our staff newly in January and Jason's on board to help us with some of the safe sport issues as well as he's also our safety coordinator for the state. Jason's wife went into labor during our board meeting. He was supposed to be with us this afternoon, but he's got a little unplanned detour going on this afternoon. So we've we've lost him. But Rick and I just kinda wanna go over some of the the safety and safe sport issues kind of at a high high level with you, just kind of a reminder as we get into and start getting ready for a new season hopefully soon. And I guess the first thing, I got a little bit of a list here, Rick. The first thing that we wanna talk about is the changes in the background check program this year. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, yeah, since this year, we started the national background check now that goes through USA Hockey. So once you register with USA Hockey, it should take you into doing your background check and safe sport training. The background check is still a two and a half year concept. It it does last for two years, but now that USA changes their seasons over in April, you can actually start after April first, you can start doing your background checks. And that will go into the following season. So you'll actually get two and a half years out of your background check. So it does behoove you to start early, get it done before the big rush comes in. They have added a few more highlights that we go into a lot further in depth check than we did in the past. So I've, it has shown over the last year that we do pick up a lot more things. The Center for Safe Sport still does most of the sexual abuse. But they will pick up a few more like assault charges, stuff like that. The center would take charge and those also, but but since it's now thirty dollar fee for doing your background check. And like I said, it it does help if you get it done early, get online and do your background checks. If you know you're gonna participate, you can register with USA as of April first and jump right in and do your background check. So good program. It does help us weed out some of the people we don't want around, but it's, like I said, just get in and get it done early. So you're not waiting for the crunch time at September one. And hopefully, we will play this year. And so you have time to get it done now. It's only Jan- July, so jump on in and get them done.
Yeah, I would just add to that what Rick said, you know, those of you that have done your background check in the past, you maybe experienced a a delay in getting your background check processed. It doesn't happen just automatically with all the different county checks and everything that happens. Sometimes it can take up to two weeks to to get a background check through the system. And that's just when we were dealing with Michigan, Michigan alone people. So and this year with people postponing their registration due to COVID, I feel like there's gonna be a lot more of a a rush, if you will, end of August, September, as the season starts up. So we don't want you guys to get caught without coaches to be able to go on the on the ice. So make sure that if you know somebody's gonna be coaching or if you know you're gonna be coaching, to get those people to do it now while while there is not a mad rush.
Yeah, and also, hey, let me add one more thing, George, sorry. Also, when you're doing your background check, if there is issues with your background check, like data input or something, you will get an email back. The company that does this is NCSI. So if you do get an email from me in CSI asking you to call or send in a correction to some of the data that you might have, you know, you could have put a number in wrong with your social security number, something like that, don't ignore it and think it's, you know, somebody trying to rip you off or or steal some of your info. If you're not sure, please email me and I will let you know and and check the number and look at the email and help put you at rest that that is the company. But they will send you an email asking you to correct some of the wrongs that may be in your data input for your background checks. Sorry.
No, no problem. And I think the other thing to note too is we're not just talking about coaches either. Anybody who has routine access to the minor participants in our program has to have a background check. So that's all your board members. That's all your your locker room monitors. If if by chance in your eight and under program, you have people that aren't necessarily a certified coach, but they're out there helping on the ice, those people need to be background checked as well. Same thing with skills coaches, those type of people that they're gonna be on your association ice, they need to be background checked and have safe sport as well, which we'll, we'll talk about here in a minute probably, but because there have been, there have been instances, not in Michigan, knock on wood. But I know of one who actually was, and the only reason I know about it is because he originally lived in Michigan, tried to sneak into an association in Colorado a few years ago, and he just showed up at the rink and volunteered to help out. And turned out, he wasn't somebody that he really wanted to have help out. So, you know, be careful. Take every precaution you can to make sure that your players, players stay safe.
Yep, absolutely. Make sure all your association board, all your association members, any parents that may wanna go in the locker room and help out, you know, for your younger kids, they come in and dress, undress. Make sure all those people get get their backgrounds done so that you feel comfortable and the people around them feel comfortable.
Next thing on my list, Rick, is our billoting policy. And I know that doesn't apply to a lot of necessarily everybody, but it's certainly important.
Yes, billoted people I know tend to mainly deal with the tier one organizations. But if there are any parents, you know, within your area or your district or your association that will be bringing in billoted players from out of state or possibly even up north, if they are housing any type of player, anybody of the age of eighteen or majority, as they say in the in the language, but anybody that is eighteen or older. but anybody that uh, is eighteen or older, uh, must do a background check and safe sport training. And we also ask that those teams that do have billeted families, that they all register and then we put them on their rosters as volunteers. That way, we can track and make sure that these people are following the rules and doing their background checks. So please um, uh, make sure if you are an organization that does billet players, we, we, we are trying to, you know, hopefully have the associations take charge of this and make sure that the people are doing their background checks and safe sport training that are in those families. So that doesn't mean just the parents, it means that they have older children or anybody else that's in that family that uh, are of age, must do a background check and safe sport training. And of course, as you know, that we now have the seventeen year olds that will be moving forward into their last year of hockey, they also now have to do safe sport training. I know we're going to get into that with safe sport, but just thought I'd throw that in there right now, so while we're speaking of that.
Rick, we got one other question on background checks here. And the question is, um, is background checking safe sport required for eight U and six U parents?
Um, a lot of that, we have in the past left that up to the association to choose. I mean, when we have eight U and six U where there's probably a whole locker room full of people. Personally, I don't think uh, that it's absolutely necessary that everybody in that room does safe sport and background check because I doubt if anything's critically going to happen when the actual parents or grandparents are there with their kids. But I do leave that up to the association. If the association wishes to have everybody do safe sport and background check, that's, has a child in that locker room, they have that right to, to, to do that. But it's not something in the past that we have demanded for eight U and six U. And that is only eight U and six U from the ten U and up. It's a must that anybody in that locker room must be background checked and safe sport trained, certified. Hope that answers it.
Yeah, I think it does.
Yeah.
Here's another one. So everyone has to do the background screening this year even if you did it last year?
No, that is not correct. And if you did it last year, you're good for this year because it is a two-year check. So every two years, you will have to do your background check. So if you did your background check in twenty nineteen, twenty season, you would be good for the night, twenty twenty, twenty-one season. So you would have to do it anytime after April 1st of twenty twenty-one.
And that will still show up on the, on the rosters as well?
Yes.
For your coaches, if you have a question, they'll know whether they need to do it or not.
Yeah, you can look that up in the registry. Uh, I just actually did that last night for one of our people up north, um, that thought he had to do it again. But yes, uh, once the registry is up and running, anybody, uh, you can go in online and, and once they're registered with USA Hockey, you, you can look that up or you can go to USAhockey.com and look that up yourself. And it will show you where you're at, what year you have to renew for both safe sport and background. There is a quick check you can do to double check if you're not sure.
Okay. Um, next, uh, let's uh, go into locker room monitors. Uh, Rick, I know that's one of your favorite topics.
Oh yes, that's uh, one of my favorite things, locker room monitoring. Of course, as we stated earlier, um, each team, you know, hopefully will pick some parents to be the locker room monitors to help out the coaching staff. You know, possibly be in there if the coaches have people that need to speak with or whatever, that they can have those conversations with people. Um, our locker room policy here in Michigan is there should be two adults in the locker room at all times or close to the locker room, like at the door, um, so that you can monitor the locker room. Doesn't mean you have to be in there all the time, but you must be in and around the locker room door at all times. And hopefully doing a pass through every so often or one in the locker room, one outside the locker room door. We do ask you to pick somebody that, you know, is of age and mature to be your locker room parents or locker room monitor. Those people must be background checked and safe sport certified also. We do have many issues that come up where nobody is in the locker room and that's when most of the stuff happens. Most of the issues with locker rooms are within the twelve U and fourteen U age brackets. Mostly the fourteen U age bracket is the worst of all of them. But yes, it's, it helps if somebody is in there. It doesn't mean they have to sit and stare at everybody, they just have to be in there to monitor sounds or at the door with the, the door jar slightly. Or you know, if it goes quiet, you know, something's going on inside the locker room. So, um, you need to do a pass through. But uh, here in Michigan, we ask that there are two people that are locker room certified at all times in and around the locker room and, and a mature adult on top of that, so. We also need to start pushing with our associations as to the parents around locker rooms. A lot of the issues we have and we get a lot of safe sport complaints because things, you know, flare up around locker rooms, especially after a game, um, that there should not be parents around the locker room unless it's an eight U or six U where they are going in to dress or undress their child. Before a game and after a game, the kids should be, the players should be able to go to his locker, his or her locker room and get dressed without the parents following them. This also helps with the kids becoming more mature and uh, moving forward, they kind of learn how to behave on their own, let the coaches uh, take care of things after a game especially. The parents have no business being around the locker room, they should be going to the lobby unless they are a locker room monitor. This is something we need to push more forward with as far as associations and teams. They should be having these conversations with the parents in beginning of the season and laying the groundwork for that. We would have a lot less safe sport issues, uh, and fights and stuff like that around the locker rooms. A lot of less anger going towards the officials and trying to charge the officials' rooms and dressing rooms. This is something that goes on every year, I get many complaints about stuff like this. And if we start being more uh, talkative with our parents, having parent meetings and doing such stuff like this and letting them know that if they're needed or if they need to have a conversation with the coach, you know, they can get in touch with the coach through an email or something like that where they can have that conversation in the lobby or after the kids are dressed or whatever, they can meet up, something like that. Or twenty-four hour rule where they have a cooldown period and then they can have that conversation with the coach. But it is something that uh, creates quite an issue with all of us during the hockey season.
Okay, thanks, uh, Rick, um, concussion recording.
Yeah, we got a question? Yeah, I think so. Looked like we had one there, or is that an old one?
That's an old one.
Okay.
Still on background chat. We had two of them that were basically the same question, I only, I only care for eight that wants it. Basically the same question though twice, two times. Um, so let's talk about uh, concussion reporting requirements. I mean, we've had a law in Michigan now for a number of years. Um, there are certain requirements that associations uh, need to do and can follow.
Yeah, we do uh, have a state law for concussions in this state where every association, every player must fill out the paperwork that the associations keep, keep a record of until that player ages out. Uh, it should be kept by age, by year. And uh, USA also has a new concussion uh, paperwork. I know Jason was supposed to uh, check into that for us, but uh, since he's not here, I would just kind of go with, I believe, and I have to have a conversation with our attorney also, uh, to make sure. But the state does have a uh, paperwork that needs to be filled out in language. It needs to be handed out to the parents explaining how the concussion and safety rule applies. USA Hockey does now have one, it probably does uh, fulfill the state requirement. I'm sure as far as language, I'm sure they did their background and made sure it probably covered most of the affiliates within USA Hockey. But that was something we need to check into. But uh, when, when there is a concussion, it's something that we trust that the association and team coaches are done their training on this and are aware that if there is a concussion issue, that that player must sit out, not play, not participate, even if the parent pushes to have that child be put back and, and even if the parent tells you that the child is okay, there is protocol that must be followed as far as a doctor signing off on the uh, concussion that he is okay to return to play. That form must be filled out, must be signed by an association and the doctor and the coach. So um, this is something we need. I know the coach probably wants to give in, but under this case, the coach has to be the bad guy or he or she as the coach must be the bad guy and say, you know, that child cannot play until they follow the protocol of being seen by a doctor and having a doctor sign off saying that player is okay to return. Now, all that paperwork must be kept by the association, like I said, must be filed and kept until that player ages out. So then we have a track record. Uh, we will be, and if we haven't already, went to a digital uh, file where we want to keep track of these. Because I know USA wants to track these along with the doctors that work with USA Hockey to try to get a lot of data on concussions because it's something early on. There are programs in schools where you can do a base um, for, for this type of stuff to get a base check. I know there's a few districts that did this, that went through uh, school computers and stuff where the kids logged in and, and did a lot of that uh, legwork. So that we do have a ongoing database for this type of uh, issue especially with the amount of concussions that happen playing hockey, so. Not sure I caught everything, George, correct me if I missed something?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you did. I mean, I think just to, to add to that, you know, it, it sounds like we're trying to make you do a lot of paperwork, but to some degree, it's for your own protection. Um, because if you haven't seen in the news, there's definitely have been cases. Uh, you've, you've seen it a lot in professional athletics for sure where professional athletes that have had numbers and numbers of concussions and are suffering some ongoing health concerns now because of that are going back and suing and, and things like that. And the same thing has happened in, in youth athletics, although to a lesser, a lesser degree because I think the, the effects are further down the road. But obviously, you want to keep your players protected and you want to keep yourself protected as, as well, so.
Especially in football and hockey with the contact that both those sports play, that it's a, it's, it is a big ongoing thing and something that we need to track and get more schooled on. So that's why they like to keep track of all this stuff, so.
Yeah, and looking at some of the research too, football certainly is at the top of the list, uh, as far as concussion. Um, but um, what would probably surprise you is that actually girl hockey is uh, not very far down the list. It's actually further up the list than boys hockey is. And I'm not really quite sure why that is, but you know, a lot of cases, you wouldn't think that that would necessarily be the case because there's certainly not the, um, there's certainly body contact, but not necessarily the same kind of hits in girls hockey as there is in boys. But, but it's, I guess my point is it's still a serious issue even in girls hockey.
Yeah, even though girls hockey mostly has been non-checked, but they, they are more probably schooled on body contact than the youth because the youths have always been checking. So they were taught more about the checking issue and how to throw a check rather than the ongoing body contact. So, yeah, I could see that where the girls probably uh, are probably more schooled on the body contact where they probably clanging helmets together a lot more than the, than the boys because the boys were usually just up for the big hits, so. But uh, as you know, with the uh, with the coaching curriculum that we have and the great one that we do have, it's uh, they are leaning more towards that body contact throughout all of the age brackets now. So uh, unfortunately, we may see more of that happening in the, in, in the boys' youth, so.
So let's um, shift gears and kind of get over into the safe sport area a little bit. Let's talk about um, the, the new rule for six oh one E three. Obviously, there was a presidential directive last fall, but now that's, in turn, it's gone through the annual congress this year and it's now a new, a new rule for a match penalty. And for those of you who don't know what a six oh one E three is, is that uh, discriminatory and racial slurs and, and things like that uh, to other players, to coaches, from coaches, whatever, whoever, any place in the game. And it really doesn't have any part in our game, so.
No, it does not. And since last year, they made that a uh, a, a match penalty for any six oh one E three, derogatory language, ethnic slurs and so on. It seems to have taken a climb uh, within the last two years. I know as far as I know, being the safe sport person, I have received a lot more complaints on the ethnic slurs. And um, I know having uh, you know, Clark Park and stuff like that in our, in, in Michigan here, it's a, it's a place where uh, I, I've been there quite a few times, it's a great place to go. But I'm sure they would appreciate getting that type of stuff out of our, out of our game. Uh, it has been added to the safe sport handbook as far as the ethnic slurs and stuff like that. So um, it's becoming more and more of a safe sport complaint sent forward. The uh, this, this year, we will be kind of handling that a little different. Um, I know, I spoke about it at my safe sport meeting the other night. That when these do come forward, that myself, I will be taking those on as a uh, as a match penalty hearing uh, along with probably the district in which it happened in. It's for any type of derogatory uh, language of any sort, especially the ethnic slurs, that uh, we need to get it out of our game. So we are going to take a directive to try to get these hearings done on a regular, ongoing basis and, and try to clean this up so that all the teams uh, and players kind of learn how that, to remove this kind of stuff. We need the coaches and the associations to take this forward and let everybody know that we're not going to take this easy lightly. Uh, we will be handing out some uh, penalties on this uh, moving forward with this playing season coming up. I know we had a few hearings last year on this, uh, but it's not something we're going to take lightly. You know, we want to need, need and want to put it into this stuff. So, I know along with what Kevin had just spoken about, uh, it's, it's a tough thing to talk about. I know I deal with it at work all the time and uh, I know it's just something we need to grow and uh, learn about and, and remove from our sport, so. With uh, with safe sport, hopefully we can get that accomplished and you kind of get the penalties across our state more equal and uh, and let everybody know that we, we were, we will be handling this uh, as quickly as possible when they do come in, so.
I think too, we just need the uh, support of all the associations and the coaches in trying to deal with this, to nip these kinds of things in the bud. I know we've had uh, some issue even with um, getting the officials to call the penalty because they're afraid, especially when you have younger kids who are referees, they're afraid of how to handle the issue. They're afraid of having to go to a hearing to discuss this kind of thing. And a lot of times, they are uh, I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
So.
Camera, camera's sneaking in on us.
Oh yeah, he's coming up next, so he's sneaking in.
Yeah, it's something, it is something that the referees, it's supposed to be an on ice penalty, it's supposed to be an immediate match penalty if the referee hears it. It, like you said though, with the younger referees, I think they're afraid to get the flag back from the coach and the player and, and get yelled at or screamed at. But it is an education that we need to get across through all of our associations, coaching and referees to uh, please call these, get them done. If it does come in as a safe sport complaint, we will make it a match penalty and have a hearing. It will be done. It will be done supplementally, but it will be done. And hopefully we can, we can get, you know, an end, an end to this kind of stuff on, on the ice and off the ice, in the locker rooms, in the penalty boxes, something that the scorekeeper can also call if he, if he hears it and he's an off ice official. So if, if there is something that going back and forth across two kids in a penalty box, you can always blow the horn at a stop play, call the referee over and have it called. So it's just something we, we need to move forward with and clean up out of our game.
So Rick, what's, what is the right rule number for this? It's, oh yeah, 601E3.
Yeah, it's 601E3, derogatory language, ethnic slurs, any type of bad type of language, swearing, anything along those derogatory language.
I see my problem. I looked it up in the rulebook really quick and it was the wrong rule, but I have an old rulebook.
Yeah, it's a 601E3, it's the third bullet of the 601E. Yes.
Yep. What else is new in, in safe sport this year, Rick?
Safe sport, just not a whole lot. Just we had, they added some language with the minor athlete stuff and nothing really major. It wasn't anything huge other than the Center for Safe Sport taking a bigger role, larger role in, in a lot of the penalties with the background checks and any type of, you know, excessive drunk driving. That was something that, that we added to the safe sport. Now if it's within a two-year period, if there are like three drunk drivings, that will be a big hit on the background check. So if, if you do get anything that comes forward, if you do get flagged for anything like that, you will, it will go to, there's a, more than one step program within the background check now. If once a flag gets, background gets flagged, we, it gets sent out and it will go through a, a one step where there'll be a committee that looks at the background check. You will have time to send in a reply to your background check if it's flagged. Stuff like that is pretty much just minor things got added to the safe sport handbook. Nothing really major this year.
All right. Anything else to add, Rick?
No, I think we pretty much covered everything there.
Well, at least we gave you the 50,000 square foot view anyway.
Yeah, exactly. It's, I may have forgot something, I don't know, but hopefully not. But I'm available on emails anytime somebody has a question, feel free to send one on. It will not have a problem. If I don't know the answer, I will get you the right answer.
Perfect. All right. Thanks, Rick. So we're, we're going to bring in Cam Eckmeyer. Cam Eckmeyer is USA Hockey's Director of IT Development. And Cam has been with, I don't know how, how long have you been with USA Hockey, Cam?
13, 13 years.
13 years, wow. You've seen a lot in 13, you've seen a lot of 13 years.
Exactly. My first pandemic, so.
Yeah, it's all of our first pandemic, I think. So at least that we know of anyway, some of us, you know, they tried to talk about the flying flu and I hardly remember that. So it's been the last pandemic, but.
I think Golda lived through the Spanish flu, so.
Anyway, USA Hockey really is on the forefront of technology, you know, with our online rulebook and a lot of the things that we're doing and coaching modules and referee education and things like that. And Cam's been a big part of that all along the way. So a lot of new things coming, a lot of enhancements coming every year. USA Hockey continues to invest heavily in their technology developments in order to, you know, provide more support to the local associations and the coaches and our volunteers. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Cam for a little bit of an update on the technology enhancements coming up.
All right, great. Thanks a lot. I appreciate you guys having me out. I love these meetings. I've attended a couple of them in person in the past and I thought, let's take advantage of the digital opportunity to connect. For those of you who maybe watched at annual congress, you would have seen some of these updates, but I know that the people who attend these meetings and affiliate meetings might but not be the group that normally goes to congress. So it was a good chance for me to share and kind of talk through some of the tools that are now available in your area. So I have a presentation I'm going to share. Everyone can see my screen? George, you guys, everyone good here before I keep going?
Yeah, you're good. Yep, good to go.
All right. So just so you guys have my contact information, Cameron E at USAHockey.org. The gentleman who works for me, Chris Liang, he's in our IT department as well. He can also be reached for any of the information, questions you have in this area or even if it's a tech support issue from, from the field, please consider it an open door to reach out to us. There's also some IT support ticketing systems that we do. So we try to keep track of everything that comes in. So please don't ever hesitate to reach out to us. Just as an overview here, over the last three years or two years, we've done 34 new systems or major upgrades that have come out. Some of them are very visible that you would have seen, say the learning, learning management system, so the age modules, the open book exam, now the officiating seminar modules and the closed book exam will be coming there as well. Those are very visible, people see them. Annual registration, as many of you hopefully have registered for the season, you would have gone through that, that went through a major overhaul. I mean, there was a lot of backend security upgrades, data privacy, just code level synchronization to make sure that we were all speaking the same technology language. A lot of that you guys probably never saw, but it's been a lot of effort involved. Some of the solutions that we've launched and the reason I share them here is they're an extension of what we've done. So we build these products because we need them. We, I say as the national office, let's say. So that's, we need the ability to do an event red registration. There was a lot of event registration platforms out there and we needed some customizations that were not being handled out in the marketplace. So we had to do it ourselves for ourselves. Same with annual registration, obviously we need to do that, a learning management system. We had four or five different e-learning systems spread out throughout the organization. So consolidating it helps save money, save that member money and streamline that process. Pond hockey is a registration system similar to the one that I mentioned just a second ago, but people out in the field use those kind of things as well. So what we thought about, and then the last one is a mobile app that can be used for meetings. So if you've attended an annual congress or something like that, there's a mobile app that can be used. The reason I highlight these is these are solutions we are extending out to the, any affiliated USA Hockey affiliate district or association. So we have a system that we're going to use and when I, now when I say the word we, I mean we, USA Hockey as in an association all the way up to the national office. We are all USA Hockey. So if we have a tool, we want to be able to extend it to you guys to be able to use it. I'm going to give you a quick run through of the event registration system right now. So just if you guys liked that video, a generation younger than me chose the music. So maybe it's good, maybe it's not. I was told that that's an okay music. So what I wanted to show you guys there was a system completely in operation right now being used in several areas, not only within the national office, but around the country. I have this flyer which I can hand out to anyone who wants it. You can get the, just email me and I can send you this flyer if you wanted to take a look. You can contact us, the email that both Chris and myself and others can see is myevents@USAHockey.org. Very quick to onboard, it's also free to onboard. We have no minimum volume costs, there is no annual usage fee, there's no fee to set yourself up or require you to run, you know, a hundred thousand or 50,000 or $10,000 through the system. All you're responsible for is the processing fee. Right now we're be able, we're able to extend a 3% and 65 cents per transaction processing fee that's handled at the moment of transaction. You will never get a bill from USA Hockey for use of this system. It's handled at the moment of the, of the transaction. The credit card companies are talking about raising that rate. We're trying to hold that out as long as we can, but the most I could see it going to is maybe 3% and 75 cents. Most shelf rates for a registration system out on the marketplace is usually going to be 3.3 to 3.5% per transaction and like a dollar to a dollar 50. So what we're trying to do is give you guys that money back. The biggest thing with all of these systems is if we can keep the money at the grassroots, that's a better investment in hockey than trying to work it the other way around. I do feel that we have an organization down in Texas, Adult League, TC Lewis, we have Oregon, an association out in Oregon said they think they're going to save about $5,000 in processing fees as well. So that's money that can go right back into their association. That's why we built these systems. The next one we built is a scoring system that's coming. This one's a little bit shorter video here. The biggest thing I wanted to show is that it's integrated with USA Hockey's database in the portal or the registry. So when you populate a, create a roster or create a player, you put in the team ID. So you're going to see here, you hit create team or add team, you put in a team ID from the registry and it populates the roster for you. So it's a real roster in this video. It automatically does that, so you're not having to tighten all of the rosters again. We're also using that to verify the coaches, handle red lines at the moment of the game starting, following the business rules. That way if a coach has not finished their CEP requirements, they cannot physically be put on that team. We're trying to help put a tool in your toolbox that can help you police the, the sport at the grassroots level. The coaches can set their lineup so that when the statistician logs in, the lineups are already set. I know I've scored games myself and you get a statistician who walked in and they didn't know who's playing and it takes a while to get the game going. Another big thing we're adding is for the referees, there's a referee approval process. When the game is over, the referee, if a referee is assigned to the game with their official's number, since it's USA Hockey talking to USA Hockey, we can contact that referee with a prompt to review the game afterward. They go in, they can make their changes on the score sheet and once they put their stamp of approval on that game, it literally puts a stamp of approval and it cannot be changed. We're following those business rules. It's something that a lot of other companies out there, and there's no, no issue with other companies that have other solutions. It's just we have, I think, a little bit better of a finger on the pulse with what hockey needs because again, we are all USA Hockey and we know that the real, realistically the business rules of who's allowed on the roster, what can that referee do? Once the referee signs that score sheet, that's real, the referee has done it, that should be it. From there you need to go through a process to appeal for a change. So that's coming out in September. We'll be identifying some beta users, the ACHA is going to be using it and we're in the final stages of making our testing and changes. The next thing here, and as I'm sure Katie and Kevin talked about, Club Excellence, I wanted to focus on one area of Club Excellence that's a little bit different. It's a new module that we're adding to the product. It's called the analytics module. What you're looking at here is a drill down and I don't want to take up to anyone's time too much, but if there's interest afterward, I could show you it in real time, we can go poke around in Michigan. What we're going to deliver to you through Club Excellence is analytics catered to your location. So that means down to zip code level integration. So this is a map actually from one of our early versions of the product, overlay of Colorado Springs with a heat map of where the players are in the city. What we think is that by giving you guys resources through Club Excellence, you can make really, really good hockey decisions down in your community, be able to filter, find out where your officials are, your players are. We've also had multiple people who want to build rinks who have come to us once they heard about this product and they asked, can you show me this city? I want to know where the players are in this city because I have a rink I want to build. And by us giving you and empowering the districts, the affiliates and the associations, as well as the national office with this, these powerful analytics tools, you guys will be able to really grow the game. And I really believe that putting these tools, the event registration system, et cetera, in your hands and by all of them working together, we start to really build something quite special. It all ties together in what is the member portal. So you guys may have heard whispers that right now we're working toward a unique member number for life. That's already being issued. If you've registered for this year or your child is registered for this year, you have your unique member number for life. You just don't know it yet. It's being hidden right now and we'll be telling you about that shortly. When you have that unique member number for life and you combine all these other systems together, you get a single footprint, single sign on. So no more 12 different logins to get into everything. You will sign in in one location. You will be able to manage your family from one location. This member progress bar, I don't know, I mean, I can't see raise of hands here, but I'm sure there are people on this call who deal with coaches and officials and players who are like, am I, am I valid for the year yet? I think I did all the steps, but I'm not sure yet. So we're breaking it down into a progress bar. The, the use case that I picture here is I have a friend of mine, actually a former employee at USA Hockey who has five children, five children and his wife registered all of them. And she's trying to keep track of who's done what and who has anything still left to do. So right now it's, it's, she's going all over the place, right? With this member portal, I keep it, whenever we do design meetings on this, I keep her in mind. Lori needs to be able to quickly thumb through the whole family and see that everyone had all of their certifications done. The second thing is when you looked at all of those products above, everything ties back into that member portal. So if you're an association, let's say you're in Grand Rapids and you have an adult hockey league. So you're saying your adult hockey league registration is 18 plus. If somebody logs into their member portal and they live within a geographic region of Grand Rapids, Michigan, and they are in the age group that matches that event, I can serve your event onto their member portal page with a registration link because it's USA Hockey talking to USA Hockey. It's not going out to a third party, the data isn't walking out the door, people registering on there are staying within the family, so to speak. Because of that, I can serve everything back and it folds all back into that member portal. So if you wanted to sign up for the event registration system, learn more about other development we're doing, get a preview of the member portal, maybe you want to see what your unique member ID is for life, you want to get a sneak preview, contact me. That's my cell phone, that's my work email, myevents@USAHockey.org would also do it. And I'm going to exit this right now. So what I would do right now is if you guys are interested or people want to see the drill down into Michigan a little bit in the analytics, I could do that or I could just take some questions or George, what would you like?
You can go ahead and do that, Cam. We've got about seven more minutes yet before we, we need to wrap up. So, you know, I think too, just to provide a little background to this, you know, we hear from time to time over the last year or so, you know, some of the issues that have been going on with registration or the registry and, you know, we've had some challenges with that. But I think you can see based on what Cam has outlined today, we had many different types of e-learning systems, we had different registration systems within, within USA Hockey, one for membership, one for coaches, one One for membership, one for coaches, one for officials. And Cam and his group are in the process of combining all of that together to, to do what he has just showed you. Creating one membership portal and everything will work out of. And as you can imagine, that's a very, very complicated process. So we are going to have some little bumps along the road. But in the end, it's going to be a fantastic system.
I think that's a great summary, George. That's, that's a very good way to put it. You, you, we also had different technology languages. So I don't know if there's anyone out there with a picture. You had one person speaking Spanish, one Russian, one Mandarin and one, you know, let's say Boston English. It's going to be different, right? So you, we had to try to pick a standardized language we were going to code from. So there's a lot going on there. That being said, our goal is excellence. And I feel any, any hiccup, like you said, a bump in the road, trust me, I feel it and try to get better. So which, what's a, what's a city I could look at here? Do you guys want to pick one? George, you want to pick one?
I think it goes for Grand Rapids. You mentioned Grand Rapids.
Okay. So this is actually from a couple of years ago data. This is real data. So what you're getting here is an analysis and this is a very rudimentary version of what you guys are eventually going to get. It gives you a breakdown here. You can see that I flagged players. So I could add coaches to it if I wanted, but here's players. And it's giving me all of my age. It's giving you your comparison to the national average. So you guys are actually ahead of the national average for percentage female in Grand Rapids. As a state, you're below. Average age in Grant, in the state is 21.4 is your average age, but in Grand Rapids, it was 17.7. Again, here's the thing is I could make my assumptions on this stuff. You guys at the grassroots would know what these numbers mean. And then I'm going to jump over here to the map. And it takes a second to load because this is literally running off of a laptop, the server. We worked with a team of data scientists out of UCLA and once COVID hit, we, we cut that party shut down. So we're, we were in the process of finishing up a lot of this. So here's the city of Grand Rapids. And at that time, your biggest area of concentration was up here, 258 players in that zip code. My guess here, just based on my experience of looking at other locations, George, you could probably help me. These are probably rinks, right? Are there rinks in these spots and these hotspots?
Yeah, I would say you're, you're, I'm not knowing exactly where they're at, but I would say yes.
So then just, just for sake of the argument, I don't know if anyone of the panelists are from this area. If somebody said, I want to build a new rink and you knew that over here is saturated with hockey rinks, but you've got 75 players. Another 65 here, another 16. You got a decent little sweet spot over here, right? In theory, putting a rink over here would get a lot of it. Now the local politics, you guys may not want to put a rink there because it'll cannibalize this traffic. But these are the business decisions that USA Hockey, I, I'm never going to be able to get involved in that. But what I can do is I can give you the data that helps you guys make those decisions.
Well, the flip side of that too, is if you're looking for new members, you could look at some areas that. You know, you maybe aren't strong in at that point and maybe target some of those areas for some new players. If, I mean, you guys have to know the geographics, but assuming that's a, you know, an area where a lot of people live, you know, be a good place to fish.
That's a good idea. That's a good point. And the other thing I'm working on that's not going to be in round one is inspired by weather maps. How you can do the, show me the radar and it animates the clouds in the past. And then you can hit the future and it'll show you where it thinks the clouds are going to go. I'm going to do that with the membership where you hit play and it will show you the membership moving. So maybe up here was empty 10 years ago. But you would see it slowly growing up. And when you combine that data with population data, you can start to make projections about where other bits of members may be coming from. And what part of town may be growing. Again, I, to me, I'll go down the rabbit hole on data till I'm blue in the face and Katie and Kevin make me leave the call. But these are, these are the things that I think the more I could put in here, more tools I can put in George's toolbox or anyone out in Michigan. The stronger you guys are going to be able to help hockey grow and, and when all of us will grow, we will benefit at USA Hockey. We will benefit because the grassroots will grow too. So that's my presentation. I appreciate your time on that. If anyone wanted to go down the, the rabbit hole further with me, I'm always happy to do that. You have my contact information. George, I'll send you that PDF of that handout. If you send it around and then.
We'll send it around, put it on the website.
And then if anyone wants to get any more information, feel free. Any, any questions right now, either through the Q and A or chat or anything?
So I guess one question that I'll ask, because I think some people would know this, a lot of our associations use SportEngine or one of the other website providers right now. And a lot of them already have a registration.
Yep.
Portal built into it. What you, what you have there is, is able to be used even if you have a SportEngine website. You can create a link or whatever from the SportEngine website into the USA Hockey portal, if you will. And be able to use that. Just because you have a SportEngine website and they have registration does not mean that they can't use your system as well.
Yeah, that's correct. It creates a link that you can put on your website. There's, and again, I tell everybody, I like, I want my solutions to be an option. There's a lot of website providers out there. Team Snap, Active, StackSport, SportsEngine. They're all integrated with USA Hockey. So you can validate memberships. They all have their pros, their cons. You make the call that's right for you. I'll just put mine up there as an option because I'm going to use it anyway and we'll extend it to you. But George is exactly right. There, you can use it however you want. We've had a couple who have, it's actually if you're, if you're looking for a place to dip your toe in. It's usually adult hockey because adult hockey usually has the lowest stress. You don't have parents who are panicking or something like that. So the adults, usually what happens is an association will dip their toe in with one adult league. And then they just run it. So Eugene, Oregon went from one event to, I don't know, they got six. Houston went from one event to, I don't know, they probably got 20 in there now. Missouri, I've got an association in Missouri that started with one camp. Now they have five or one, one event. Now they have five. So it just, they dip their toe in and then they go.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Cam? I don't see any in the chat or any in the Q and A box. Thanks, Cam. Appreciate you coming on this afternoon. Thanks to Kevin, Katie, Rick and everybody for participating in this afternoon's town hall. Hope you guys all have a great rest of your day and I encourage you to join happy hour here in a few minutes. Thanks.